Good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to call to order this Pierce County Council meeting and Tuesday study session. The date is March the 7th, 2023, and the time is approximately 12:02 PM. We have all members present except for Councilmember Herrera who is excused. Item number two is review of today's council meeting agenda, Mr. Cox.
Yes, Chair Mello, members of the council, Jeff Cox, council staff, you have in front of you the council meeting agenda for March 7th, 2023. I should point out that by 3:00 PM, you'll have a version that says amended meeting agenda because it is in fact amended. The meeting will be at 3 o'clock at the council chambers at 9:30 Tacoma Avenue South, room 1045. The first item of action on your agenda is under sub five consent agenda, and you'll see the new additions listed there. Under sub B, action on ordinances, you have the addition of a referral to Economic and Infrastructure Development Committee and setting a date for final council hearing for proposal 2023-7. And that's an ordinance restating and modifying the Pierce County Small Business Innovation Matching Grant Program. Under sub C, action on resolutions, you have first up a resolution R 2023-163, and you are referring that to the Rules and Operations Committee with the date of final hearing of March 21st, 2023. And that proposal is a resolution authorizing release of funding for a micro home village project pursuant to revises of 2022-23 Pierce County Biennial Budget. Sub two, under action on resolutions is proposal R 2023-25 for referral to Rules and Operations Committee at the final hearing date of March 28th, and that's a resolution amending resolution 2019-137. And one other resolution relating to the council standing and select committees and setting an effective date. Next, under your agenda items, you have under sub eight ordinances, you have your first proposal up of four, and that is 2022-81, and that's an ordinance leaving an additional sales and use tax of 1/10th of 1% of housing-related services as authorized by our CW 8214-530, and eventing Pierce County Code Chapter 4.28 Sales and Use Tax in Section 4.48020 Special Revenue Funds. This received a due pass recommendation at Human Services Committee on December 6th, and it was continued substituted at the December 13th council meeting. This is up for final consideration. Next, under item two, your proposal 2023-2, this is an ordinance adding publication of a countywide equity index as a duty of the Finance Department and requiring an equity analysis of proposed ordinances and resolutions. It also amounts Pierce County Code Chapter 1.28 Rules of Procedures, Pierce County Council, and Chapter 2.06 Departments and Organizations Setting an Effective Date. It received a due pass recommendation at Human Services Committee on February 21st. It's up for final consideration. Item three, propose it's an ordinance proposal 2023-3S. It's a substitute, and it demands the Pierce County Salary Classification Plan regarding the Pierce County Auditor, Assessor, Treasurer, Executive, and Sheriff salaries on the recommendation of Pierce County Systems Commission on Salaries for elected officials. This received a due pass as substitute recommendation rules and operations committee on February 2nd, and it's up for final consideration. And your final item, item four is a proposal 2023-4, an ordinance of the council declaring certain county-owned real property to be surplus situated along Needham Road East located in the southwest corner of the northeast quarter of Section 20 Township 18 North, Range 5 East of alignment Meridian, authorizing the county executive to pursue disposal of the property by sale, exchange, or lease pursuant to Chapter 2.110 of the Pierce County Code Property Management. This received a due pass recommendation at the Rules and Operations Committee on February 6th, and it's up for final consideration, and I'd be happy to answer questions. And I should note that you will have an additional item that will show up at the meeting, but is not on the agenda yet. Setting an executive session to be added to the council agenda, section B E, and this is related to Chapter 423110, one I of the of the RCWs.
An executive session for the 3:00 PM council meeting?
Yes, it is, but it hasn't been added to the agenda.
We can talk after this. Thank you. I want to make note that the I anticipate motion to come forward for proposal 2022-81S, the 1/10th of 1% for affordable housing-related services to continue it from today's meeting and continue it for a final on March 21st to give the council a couple more weeks to continue to refine this. I feel like we're getting we're getting close, but the council needs a couple more weeks to. Mr. Cox.
Sir, I may have misspoken there, and Mr. Taylor just corrected me. Apparently, we're not going back into executive session. It's just a motion to accept under the consent agenda, so I appreciate something you've already discussed.
Thank you. We can answer further questions by members in a closed session today if needed. So are there any other questions or comments on today's 3:00 PM council meeting agenda? I'm not seeing any. That brings us to item three, external boards and commissions. Mr. Taylor, can we start with you?
Yes, thank you. So just one item to note, Puget Sound Regional Council Transportation Policy Board Meeting on March the 9th. So this week there's one action item that is on the agenda for that board meeting, and that is action regarding the Federal Transit Administration Funding Distribution Methodology. This is an item that Chair Mello discussed at a prior study session. So that item is before the board for its recommendation. Ultimately, it will go before the executive board for final consideration. Also, before the board that day are several discussion items, including discussion regarding transportation data collection and inventory, the Federal Highway Administration targets and project delivery effort, and then the public participation plan for the Puget Sound Regional Council. So those are the items to note for the Transportation Policy Board this week.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Just building on the report about the Transportation Policy Board. It is important that all of our delegates do be there. We've the long-awaited Federal Transit Administration Funding Formula for local for transit agencies will be on the agenda. We've been working on this for some time. And I'm pleased to report that the new formula that will be up for consideration at the Transportation Policy Board this Thursday would result in Pierce Transit getting approximately nine to 10 million more per year in the formula, nine to 10 million more per year for capital. You can use these dollars primarily for capital improvements, which is very helpful to support the system. So that's a good win for Pierce Transit and the South Sound, and the next stop is the Transportation Policy Board this Thursday, and hopefully we forward it on to the to the executive board. Let me open it up to other external boards and commissions by other members. Councilmember Denson.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I attended the Puget Sound Regional Council Growth Management Board last Thursday. And one of the main things they they did was to review and update of the Housing Incentives and Tools Survey. I don't think this information will be too surprising to you all, but the top incentives that local jurisdictions are using in terms of incentivizing and helping housing are the multi-family tax exemption program. I always want to say manufactured. The reduction in parking requirements in more urban areas, in particular, density bonuses, and they emphasize that a lot of local jurisdictions, no surprise, are changing zoning or are considering zoning changes, including ADUs, mixed use, and middle and high density. They also said that more and more jurisdictions are using subsidies and deciding that they really need to dedicate funds to subsidize affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Of note, the middle housing bill, those of us following along, House Bill 1110, the middle housing bill, and the ADU bill cleared its House of Origin cutoff in the House of Representatives late last night. Vice Chair Campbell.
Just a question for Councilmember Denson. You said that there's more and more communities that are using subsidies. How are they funding those subsidies?
That is a good question. I'm not sure if that's in this report. It probably is, so I can dig in and get that information to you. Yeah.
Most likely the 1/10th, 1% for affordable housing is direct subsidies to builders.
I'm sure those that have it are are happily using that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other external reports out on external boards and commissions, Councilmember Morel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Zoo Trek Authority met last Wednesday, March 1st. The both the trek and the zoo are going through some conceptual drawings on what the next generation is going to look like at both trek and the zoo. Metro Parks is looking at a bond issue in the near future to be able to pay for these capital improvements. Trek is gonna looks like they're going to include RV parking overnight spots within the park, campsites for tents mainly for youth organizations that want to come and spend a weekend at the park. And they're also looking at glamping. So trying to be, you know, cover all their bases.
Eco tourism.
Yeah, so they they have, like I say, it's all conceptual. So and then the zoo is doing the same thing, doing update on projects. So that's moving forward. They did. They submitted for accreditation. They passed the written portion, and now they've got to have the physical walkthrough to finish up their accreditation process. A lot of work goes into doing that. As far as the trams, Councilmember Campbell's favorite subject. They have four coaches currently, coaches five and six. Due to supply chain issues and other challenges are still under construction. They don't expect them in the near future. So they may just have to deal with the four coaches. They they have they've have found some glitches, which internally they've been able to solve. They have a couple of good mechanics that work on electric vehicles that have figured out some of the idiosyncrasies of the tram, but it'll be a major shift to be able to silently go through the park versus the putt 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 of the current tram. Charging is is doing well. They're able to get more trips out of a charge than originally had anticipated. So that'll be that'll be good once they get everything going. So other than that, animals, we've got a new tiger at Point Defiance, and then we have several new orphan mooses, little baby mooses that are running around there. And so but, you know, everyone's looking forward to spring. So we're doing doing well. Finances are good. We made it through the pandemic. Thank God to a lot of our foundation members that helped us through that time. So that's my report on Zoo Trek.
Thank you. The plural of moose is mooses, not meese. Is that right? We think.
I think it's just moose. It's just moose.
I just thought I'd throw mooses out there.
What's plural of goose?
But it's not meese. Important business here.
Thank you, Councilmember Morel. Councilmember Hitchen.
Thank you, Chair. I think two that I wanted to highlight, Pierce County Coalition Against Domestic Violence, again, Not in Code is still going strong. They're still meeting as a coalition, and I kind of help shepherd that work and through some partnerships, both with the city of Tacoma's police chief and force and community advocates at Me Centro, they're putting on a domestic violence awareness and education opportunity summit here in downtown Tacoma. The proposed dates are May 31st to June 2nd, and the focus really is about advocates, law enforcement, first responders, medical providers. It's it's teaching and learning and how to respond when presented with someone who is experiencing domestic violence of any kind or gender-based violence. So pretty excited to have something in person, and there's been some great dialogue and partnerships happening there. Happy to provide any other information. It's still we are hands off. They are off and running. I'm super excited about that, but they are they are thrilled for this partnership with the city of Tacoma and Me Centro and and specifically a couple of detectives within the police force there. The second one is RCC continues to work on reworking the ILA contract that they have with with each other and the county. And so there's been a subcommittee created to do the the wordsmithing. It's not a shall, should conversation. It's just how do we collectively do public records and how do we work together and just do programming and such that comes with running a TV station and a lot of equipment? So they're continuing to work on that, but they've they've had. I feel like they've gotten over the hump. Now it's down to the kind of little details, but they've been moving forward with that and doing some really intentional work with our city and town partners and then a lot of lawyers, a lot of lawyers. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councilmember Hitchen, not to put you on the spot, but do you want to say anything further about the opioids summit coming up in a couple of weeks?
Oh, yeah, that was like, that's yes, that's coming up. I forwarded everybody the registration. Lunch is provided. Please share within your networks. It is open to the public. It will be live streamed if you can't make it. There's going to be a portion at the end where we will have a dialogue as 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 county leaders and legal legal folks and anyone else that's in the room about how we organize what is going on with the funding that's coming to county. And then the other half of the room, the providers and advocates and community members will talk about what are some suggested priority areas. So the the summit, the task force that's kind of organizing is is doing the learning and where we are as the first half, and then we'll kind of do some work, intentional work in the two different areas of what needs to happen that how do we spend the money and what do we spend the money on is really the way it's broken out, and the more voices there, the better. I'm going to work with this long when she returns about what we need to do as far as noticing, because I think we are going to have enough people from several agencies that it might need to be noticed. And since we are talking about things that people may be going back and doing policy work, I think that will happen, which is different than prior summit. So trying to coordinate that work because I want to make sure we do everything we're supposed to be doing.
Thank you for thinking through all of that and all the work to prepare for a productive day so we can continue before it as a region on wise opioid investments. Councilmember Kruber.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to add one more thing on on the zoo. I don't know what they are, but they said the budgies were leaving.
Oh, no.
I don't know what a budgie is. I meant to look that up. So that was just one little extra.
They're migrating.
I didn't want to end on a downer.
So if they're still there, you have time.
We'll Google this to. Thank you for that.
Field trip.
Maybe we should have should have had our council retreat on it.
In district meeting at the zoo.
I think we tried to suggest that before, but the logistics of getting people to and from the meeting building.
Well, they have trams.
That's good.
But if you could, yeah.
Vice Chair Campbell.
Sorry, I'm just heartbroken over the budgies. The we'll actually discuss it more at our Pierce Transit meeting next Monday, but beginning this month, Pierce Transit has been expanding service. During the pandemic, service was cut a lot just due to driver shortage. And so that hiring is on track, and with that, we're able to add some additional routes, and as soon as I get some information on that, I'll share with with everyone more details on the route expansions that we've had over at Pierce Transit.
Thank you. Exciting to be adding back service.
Yes, yes. And I see you have letters to Sound Transit next, so I won't go way into that.
And Pierce Transit.
Yes, and Pierce Transit.
We will talk about Sound Transit and Pierce Transit a little bit more here in a little minute. I'll just add to others, Councilmember Campbell and I will be at the Joint Municipal Action Committee this Friday. The main topic of discussion will be furthering conversation about youth violence prevention. I know a number of you are also very interested in this topic and how we work together to significantly reduce the uptick we've seen in youth youth violence. So that's going to be the main point of conversation at Joint Municipal Action Committee this Friday. And then the other thing I'll just report on is the South Sound Housing Affordability Partners. We continue our work to seat a advisory board. The interlocal agreement calls for an advisory board. We've had lots of interest. Thank goodness for service in that advisory board. Thanks to many of you for getting the word out about that opportunity. So we'll be seating those here soon. And we're the the shape board is also working on the the work plan for the advisory board, so we could be clear on what what we what we're asking the advisory board to think about on our behalf. So that's largely the work of of shape right now. And I'll leave it at that. Moving us to item four, Chair's topics, just a few items here. There's a letter that's in the packet around Sound Transit 3 related to the Tacoma Dome Link Extension Delay. We were, the the region was notified last week that Tacoma Dome Link Extension, right from SeaTac Airport to Fife and Tacoma Dome Station is going to be delayed another three years now till the end of 2035. And while incredibly frustrating and disappointing, there's a draft letter in packet that certainly tries to express the frustration that I think all of us taxpayers have. It, the letter does strive to hit a productive and solution-oriented tone. I think we we we've been paying into the system for some time. The the delivery of light rail and the other services of Sound Transit is incredibly important to our economic competitiveness and our quality of life and the necessity of people to move around the region to get to opportunities. So the the letter really does attempt to strike a tone of productivity and suggested solutions about, okay, a delay is happening, not because of money, but because of planning issues. And while these while these projects are complicated, right, it is delayed five years, and that does have a burden on people who are trying to get around this very populated region. So there's bullets in the letter where we, the suggested letter expresses what we want Sound Transit to seriously consider as mitigation in the meantime, right? Yes, it's delayed. Others doesn't seem like there's anything we can do to fix the delay, but what can Sound Transit do in partnership with us to provide transit options for people to to move around the region despite the delay between now and 2035? The specific ideas include more frequent sounder commuter rail service, which is already online, but really limited to peak morning and peak evening times. So one of the ideas is more frequent sounder commuter service throughout the day. So it's a more reliable option for people. It's not a replacement of light rail, but but it's an option that does exist to move people through Central Putea Sound. In Sound Transit 3, sounder commuter rail service is contemplated to expand from Lakewood to DuPont. And that's in the plan, so the letter suggests speeding up delivery of that deliverable sooner rather than later so that our our voters and users can see something tangible that would serve the South Sound sooner rather than later. Another suggestion is around increasing another existing service, which is but express bus service. Many of us use express bus service to get to downtown Seattle. Many of our constituents use express bus service to get to the airport to get to the east side of King County to get to employment or to get to education opportunities, other other reasons to get to King County. So the suggestion here is more frequent express bus service in the interim. I would add discussion for another day. The HOV system is failing in Central Putea Sound, and the HOV system needs to get fixed to make a ground transportation option like express bus service really work and be travel time competitive, but that that suggestion needs to go to the Washington State Department of Transportation. And then there's another bullet point here about partnering with Pierce Transit to increase point-to-point transportation options like the Dial-A-Lift program or the PT Runner service and help us expand that. That really helps communities like Sumner or Ordin where there's not Pierce Transit Service, but there is Sound Transit Service and Sound Transit taxpayers, and how we could provide some some service to expand the PT Runner program. A lot, including with a focus in Sumner and Ordin as an example. So again, the letter strives to be solution-oriented while expressing frustration. The request I have is, does anyone have any comments, additions, or major edits? I would I my understanding is Sound Transit has a open feet of public input process going on between now and March 17th, I believe, about about this topic, and I'd like us to weigh in within their stated deadline. So let me open it up for feedback. I'll start with Vice Chair Campbell.
And Chair Mello, thank you for your leadership on drafting this. And I think for your leadership, because if I'm correct, you don't serve on Sound Transit. I don't think we have anyone from this council that has has representation on Sound Transit. From the counties, is it the executive that's on Sound Transit?
It is the executive.
So are we coordinating our messaging with our board member that's on there to ensure that this is happening? And I I think you for getting out in front of this, I will say, I don't think I've heard anything from the executive's office on this change. But I haven't caught every piece of media that's gone out. So I think it'd be good for us to be coordinating with our representative on Sound Transit, both on the development and the application of the letter to ensure that these items are not just wished for, but actually implemented.
Good, good, good point. I've been in communication with the executive when we first got the news that the executive and I had an opportunity to chat. We very much shared the frustration. Also, in coordination with Mayor Woodards in Tacoma and the board member from Tacoma, a board member, council member, Deputy Mayor Christina Walker. So I've been coordinating with them, invited the executive to sign on, invited Tacoma to sign on. Tacoma and I signed on to a joint press statement. The the so coordinating, yes. I think it's helpful. What I'm hearing from board members, it's it's helpful to have some outside pushing with some ideas while they work the inside game of the the inside board politics and and the art of the possible inside the board. So this is us outsiders, so to speak, pushing on the system. I I had a conversation this morning with the executive about it. He said he's not in a position to sign on to this letter, but he's actively engaging with board members. I don't think anything we're asking for is in left, complete left field. The minutia will be left to the insiders.
Thank you. Thank you for your work on it. You can add, when do you need our signatures by, or are you looking for just a council consensus to have it come from the chair or individual signatures?
I think looking for consensus from the council. So good. It's looking for consensus from the council to allow the chair to send the letter.
I think it's a good idea.
Thank you. Councilmember Kruber.
Thank you, Chair. Do we have an idea how much we have paid into the Sound Transit since they started collecting the tax?
I don't think we have that at this moment, but I can ask a staff member from Sound Transit to follow up. So we'll get that.
Because I think that would be interesting, considering how much we've paid. It would be validating to ask for these things considering that, having that knowledge.
I would just, yes, I'm sure that information is available. I will just add, we are getting some Sound Transit services. I know you're saying we're not getting any, but I just wanted to remind those listening, we are getting some Sound Transit services today. The voters have been expecting light rail extension by 2030. So we expect that. It's now delayed to 2035. by 2030. So we expect that. It's now delayed to 2035, hence, hence the frustration and, and the letter. But we are getting certain way, we have existing light rail in Tacoma. We do have sounder express bus service. We do have sounder commuter rail service today. They are spending a lot of money trying to get light rail to Pierce County. So they are, Sound Transit is investing in the South Sound. Is it equitable? That's a good question. And hence your question, I think your, your question may raise another series of, of thoughts for us to provide.
Thank you, especially at where I am.
We'll, we'll follow up.
Thank you.
Any, any objection to us sending this letter to the Sound Transit Board of Directors?
I want to see the numbers, but you have consensus.
Thank you. The next item here, it probably looks very familiar because the council approved the, these letters of support for Pierce Transit to Senators Cantwell and, and Murray. This is a congressionally directed spending request from Pierce Transit to do significant upgrades throughout the Pierce Transit system for the shelter, for shelters throughout the system. These are letters of support for the exact same thing to the, to the House members, Kilmer, Smith and Strickland. I don't know about why Schreier is not on here. This is a request of anticipating your question.
Probably service areas.
Probably service area. It's probably the right answer.
I looked at it and then I answered.
Is there, this is the exact same letter and content we sent to our senators. Is there any objection to sending the same letter to our House members? Councilmember Kruber.
Thank you, Chair. I'm looking for some information, but you're just looking for not individual signing, correct?
Right. Just seeing if the body is in agreement.
As a tent, I want some numbers, but you, you're fine.
Thank you. The only other thing I will say under Chair's topics is please see the, your email for the agenda packet for our budget-focused committee of the whole tomorrow. The detail is in, is in our email packets. Number five, I, I'm sorry, Mr. Taylor, you, you were going to present that for me. Did, did you have anything to add?
I know you did a wonderful job, Mr. Chair.
Apologies. Item five, other business proclamation review. There is a Women's History Month draft proclamation here for your review. Per the suggestion of Vice Chair Campbell yesterday, we have a really, I think, quite elegant approach this year where we want to consider this at the same meeting as we recognize and honor the Daffodil Court. Where we're going to have a, a many young women in chambers celebrating their leadership. So that is the plan. If folks have any suggestions for improvement on this resolution, I will ask you to work directly with Ms. Price, who's, who's helped us craft this. Thank you, Ms. Price. So please get with her if you have suggestions for improvement. Is there any other business by members before we enter an executive session? Any other business by members? Councilmember Kitchen.
Thank you, Chair. Three things. So we did confirm with PCTV that the video that Councilmember Dentson and I shot the other day will, will be available. We will get to preview it this Friday, we believe.
And then we'll decide if we want to show it.
If we, if, A, the time makes sense because it's a pretty full agenda with the Daffodil Court, but just we, we may have a video that we would like to add to the meeting. So just highlighting that for you as a chair unless you oppose. Second is that we next Tuesday as well is Pi Day. So just keep that in mind in the back of your head. And then on the 21st, the following week, just to coordinate the colors that go for our Down Syndrome proclamation that is coming before the council on the 21st. So 3-2-1 day is blue and yellow. So just wanted to highlight because I know sometimes we wear yellow for the Daffodil Court as well. So I don't know how much yellow everybody owns, but just wanted to, if you're choosing to go with the theme, the color is blue and yellow on the 21st. Just throwing it out there because I have to. So, thank you.
Like today's color theme.
It did turn out that way.
Every week.
Yes, they were all wearing black or some shitty dark.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. There, there are notices around the office here about, about Pi Day. For those of the, in the office of the Pierce County Council and, and others, if you're going out to get pies, we're also doing a peanut butter drive here at the Office of the Pierce County Council. So we're collecting peanut butter in our reception area that will be delivered to Emergency Food Network. We all know that peanut butter is a great source of protein and staple that many go without because of the, the price of it. So we are doing a peanut butter drive. So if you're getting a, if you're going to the store to get a pie to participate in Pi Day, you might pick up a couple of jars of peanut butter to add to our peanut butter drive. Vice Chair Campbell.
Sure, I, I, I would remind people that Pi Day 3.14 is because of the mathematical formula pi. It really is a celebration of mathematics and has been co-opted by food, which is fine because really, I mean, what constitutes math better than a pie? You know, when you have a pie, you have how much is left and how much is eaten every time. So I would also encourage people to take time to celebrate and honor math in your life during Pi Day along with pie.
That'd be fun.
I'll be out.
Oh, no, it's, it's pie. That's why.
It's, pie is why, yes.
Got to, got to keep it light with all the serious business.
I'm sorry, this conversation's getting circular.
Mr. Taylor, is there any other items of business before we move to executive session?
No, Mr. Chair, no further items.
Mr. Cox, can you please state publicly the purpose of the executive session and the amount of time we think we need?
The, the purpose of the meeting is RCW, actually it's allowed as an executive session, allowed pursuant, pursuant to RCW 4230 110 1B to consider selection of a site or the acquisition of real estate for lease by purchase when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of increased price. The time would be, I, I don't have, Mr.
Can I have a hand signal? How much time does staff think they need with us? Does that include our time for our questions, you think? So we'll be in an executive session for 30 minutes. We'll start in two minutes. We're going to be here in chambers in person. So we're start at 12:42 by the clock in the chambers. Lord Jesus, why do I do that to myself? 112 will be the approximate. The, the 112 would be the time when we will come out of executive session. So we stand in recess until 112. So we're back from our executive session. The time is 1:14 PM and seeing no other business before the Pierce County Council and Tuesday study session, we are adjourned.